Thank you.
Hear the mic. There you go. Thank you. Okay, welcome everyone. Thanks for coming to the meeting tonight for December 20th, 2023. Do all please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag? Okay, first on the agenda is the is public comments on the agenda items. If there is any, please raise your hand, state your name. Seeing none? Uh announcements. The announcement we have here is to provide public comment, individuals must approach the podium. So they can speak clearly into the microphone in order to for their comments to be captured in the minutes. The supervisors met an executive session on December 14th to discuss personnel. And I will say we are we will be holding an executive session tonight afterwards to discuss some personnel and some real estate matters as well as a legal issue. Moving forward. The consent agenda, November 15th, 2023, meeting minutes. The wind plan review status, escrow release and vouchers, emergency services report. The building zoning, building permits report, public works report. Park and Rec Committee report. Twenty twenty four fire company contracts for signature. And Greg, I'll ask you to read the Treasury. Name of the bills?
Sure. The Treasury's report for November 30th, 2023. The general fund, one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty three cents. Highway aid, one hundred and eighty five thousand, eight hundred and ninety one dollars and fifty two cents. Open space, one million, three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety nine dollars and fifty nine cents. The park fund, fifty thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars and seventy six cents. Equipment fund, twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty six dollars and thirty nine cents. Highway capital, one hundred and thirty seven, thirty two. The street light, thirty seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty three dollars and twenty five cents. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, four hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and fourteen cents. The American Rescue Plan funds, five hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars and forty eight cents. Open Space Manderfield, forty one thousand, five hundred and forty two dollars and sixty cents. The sewage maintenance fund, two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty three thou- fifty three dollars and ninety cents. The stormwater, twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy seven dollars and forty seven cents. And the escrow funds, two million, four hundred and fifty seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and sixty six cents.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from my fellow board members?
I have none.
You have none?
Questions?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, although signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Confirmed appointments. I do not see any on the list. So moving forward, next on the agenda is committee reports. And the first on here is the Penrejuson Police, Mr. Chief Dickinson. How are you? Oh. I, no, no, I, I went one line down. I'm sorry. It's it's the committee reports. No, planning commission, Chris Terstein. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. How was everybody?
Great.
Good. All right. So planning commission met last Tuesday. We had three applicants on the agenda. Um, first presenter was Telford Borough Authority. Um, they brought in a, a study showing a plan to extend public sewer, uh, down to the down county line or, I guess, north on County Line Road to, uh, the Hidden Valley Development Area, um. Serving that and some other properties along County Line and some in Franconia Township. Um, they're proposing a low prep, a low pressure system, which would require grinder pumps at each property. Um, two to four inch mains going down the roads, uh, via horizontal bore so they won't be doing any trench work, uh, probably trench work going into the houses. Um. The it shows eighty six homes to be connected, uh, estimated cost would be around thirty six thousand per home. Um, there is a fair amount of grant money available that they're gonna try to, uh, get a hold of, uh, which would greatly reduce the, the cost. Um, plans, it's consistent with our fight, Act 537. Um, so they were looking for a recommendation to, uh, uh, pass this plan along to you guys. And we are doing that. So that's it with, uh, TBA. Do you have any questions on it?
No, I have none.
Uh, one question I have is, have, have anybody talked to Franconia Planning, to coordinate?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Yes, they have talked. They're, they're part of this too.
Okay. So I was wondering if the planning commissioner, planning commission members talked.
No, we do not.
All right. So next applicant was Wawa, uh, State Road and Meeting House Road Project. You guys are well aware of this project, and I'm gonna be brief with this. Um, they've been in, I think this was their third or fourth time in front of us. Um, they plugged in some of our suggestions to the plan. Um, notably sidewalks. We had lengthy discussion about sidewalks. Um. We were trying to connect them up to Old State, uh, in anticipation of the Old State Warehouse Project that potentially coming in. Um, to run it up the roads, uh, showed a lot of difficulty. Um, they, they put them on the plan to run up, uh, in a green area on their property to Old State Road, which wasn't ideal. Um, so we decided to eliminate that from now. Um, they're gonna have frontage on State Road now, which originally we were proposing not to have frontage on State, or, uh, sidewalks on a frontage on State Road, pardon me. Um. You know, with, with the anticipated warehouse coming in, that it might, might, uh, trigger road widening and whatnot improvements on Meeting House. So hopefully take care of any sidewalk issues then to connect down to, to the Wawa, um, property. Um. Everything else was acceptable to the planning commission. Um, like I said, they, they pretty much plugged in everything we had concerns about. Um, so without getting into a whole lot of detail, just gonna let you know that we, uh, we are recommending conditional preliminary final approval. So I'm assuming they're gonna be in sometime. Are, are they scheduled for next month yet, or?
January, right?
So you'll see them in January?
Okay.
Any questions with them?
I have none.
Have none?
All right. So our last applicant was, uh, Tim Snyder, Butter Creek Builders. Uh, he has the Camp Rock Hill subdivision, uh, in the RC, RC zoning district. Um. He's been working on this one for a while. He's got, uh, he has an approval for a thirteen lot subdivision, uh, on that property with a loop road. He has since come in with a plethora of different plans. Um, the latest one is a revision to a six lot configuration. Um. All lots gaining access from Camp Rock Hill Road, um, with shared driveways. Or, well, there'd be, there's six properties, three shared driveways. So there'd be three driveways coming in on. Township does not typically desire shared driveways, uh, and the new subdivision ordinance, uh, does not allow them. Um. PC members were generally not in favor of the shared driveway situation. Um. There is enough space from his access points on Camp Rock Hill Road to provide driveways for each property. Um. We're not sure if we want to see that either because, you know, you're gonna have four driveway side by side coming off, off the one access. The other two would be individual accesses, uh, separated by some property. Um. So we're, we asked them to kind of tweak that and see what they can come up with and make it a little more desirable. So we'll see what they come back with. And that's all I have for them tonight as well. Have you any questions on that?
I have a brief question.
Sure.
And I, I think I, I know the answer, but the, the individual drivers, if they were individual drivers, they would be on their own properties, right?
Yeah, I guess it would be easement coming down. There, there'd be four side by side driveways.
I understand.
Yeah.
But it'd be their own property.
They'd be their own driveway.
Shared. There would not be any fighting and arguing over driveways. This is what we're trying to eliminate.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
So one, one of the resolutions, I guess, you know, that the, the, two of the properties would be, could be separated and, you know, the driveways would not be side by side. The other four. You know, what he was suggesting is to leave them as shared driveways. But have the ability to separate them if there is ever a neighbor issue. But to separate them, they would still be side by side by them. But it would be an option if there's ever any kind of conflict between neighbors, shared driveway owners.
Would require construction and
Yep.
litigation. What if somebody doesn't want to do that? One of, one of the, one of the shared driveway people say, no, I'm not spending the money?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Any other questions for Chris on that? Okay.
Questions?
All right. Very good. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the planning commission reports. Is that it? Motion's been made.
Second.
Second it, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next up here is the Conservation Committee report, Mr. Michael Schrameyer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our, uh, our last Conservation Committee meeting was held on Thursday, November 16th. And, uh, here's the highlights. For the Township Newsletter, Conservation Committee discussed potential articles for the upcoming spring and also the fall 2024 newsletters. One suggestion would be to set a pattern of including an updated property scorecard that would show all the properties that are conserved with, um, their acreage. And, um, put that in the spring newsletter and then put the conservation map in the fall newsletter, which is what we've had before. Uh, one of the reasons is we are updating the map and it's gonna take some time to get that printed up and finalized. Um, we also discussed a a different article topics for this spring, and we narrowed them down to an article on the benefits of open space and conservation for the community. So that'll be prepared and sent in on time. Also for the Township Newsletter, Karina is one of our members. She again discussed adding a page to the newsletter called, for example, uh, Eye on Development. Uh, this page will highlight all ongoing development projects in the township so residents are informed of what's coming up and what's also happening. Um. Karina presented examples from both Lower Salford Township and Franconia Township newsletters that actually do that. And they're pretty, uh, pretty u- useful or very informative. Uh, so Karina will be writing a letter to the, uh, supervisors to share her passion and support of such an addition to the upcoming newsletters. I don't know if you've received that or not yet. Okay. Um, we also discussed, uh, going ahead with a booth at township events to sort of inform everybody about our activities and the benefits of the conservation. And allow people to come in and ask questions. Um, so far, we're looking at trying to set one up for the fishing derby and also the Historical Society picnic. Uh, the fishing derby is in April, the Historical Society is in July, and then also the September Fest. We missed this year because September Fest was canceled. Um, and I'm not sure if you're aware, we have three new members over the last year out of five. So I'm trying to do a conservation one-on-one classes every time we have a meeting. On the last one, uh, we present and explain the property evaluation worksheet we use when we evaluate properties for conservation. And also there's a conservation checklist or actually a set of action items for moving a property through the conservation process. Um, these documents are actually included in Township's 2010 Open Space Park and Rec Plan. And that's available on the Township website if you're interested in looking at it. It's that thick. But way at the back end are some of these, um, checklists. And that's all I have.
Okay.
I'd like to wish everyone a, uh,
Happy holiday. And you as well.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Good job.
One suggestion and, uh, offer, because when we did the initial open space plan, one of the things that we found actually stopped people from walking right past because we came out, we, uh, set up uh, boards during the elections. And I have that map, which is the old West Rock Hill or Rock Hill before it was consolidated. Also happened to have the panel which shows West Rock Hill after they were split. And when you put those, if you can blow them up, or I'll make a copy and put it up. But that is really good at stopping people over tracks going, oh, where is my house on this map? Where did I find this? So anybody who's got
I'll point something out. When we had the fire panel meeting, they, they all, the chiefs all went over there and looked at that map after
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yep. So if you can get that map either at any event, or if you get the maps like that, you get your map showing where people have conservation and you get some of the, uh, you know, pictures showing where those are and maybe get a couple little sections showing where, uh, Fred's pictures were taken. That should be really good at slowing people down and getting their attention after they come out from voting while they're walking around for the fishing derby or for September Fest or for any other event.
Yeah. I like that idea.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, welcome. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion for approval of Michael's report.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Second it, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you again, Michael. Um, moving forward here, the next on the agenda is the tax collector report.
Yep.
And that is Suzanne Clark. Nope, I'm sorry. I messed up again. I keep
It's that time of year.
Chief, I gave you a chance. All right. Let's, yeah, you want to be a tax collector? All right, starting over, commission reports.
Everyone wants to go home early.
Up, yeah. David said make this shorter. Welcome, Chief.
Okay, uh, the November 2023 activity report for the Penrejuson Police Department. Uh, the department responded to six hundred and seventy seven calls for service. Two hundred and ninety six of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township, three seventy four were in West Rock Hill Township, and seven calls were assisting our neighboring agencies. Twenty eight traffic crashes were reported in the month of November. Fourteen of them were reportable, fourteen of them were non-reportable. With fifteen occurring here, uh, fifteen occurring in East Rock Hill Township and the remaining thirteen in West Rock Hill Township. Officers responded to eight Part One crimes and thirty two Part Two crimes, totaling forty crimes for the month of November. Uh, those reported crimes are in East Rock Hill Township was one DUI crash, one criminal mischief, one DUI, two drug calls, one fraud, two harassments, three local ordinance violations, one retail theft, two thefts. Uh, I'm sorry, two threats, one theft, three, three reports of trespassing and one underage drinking. Uh, crimes for West Rock Hill, we had a hit and run, criminal mischief, disorderly conduct, a drug complaint, fraud complaint, harassment complaint, sexual offense complaint, four thefts and four reports of trespassing. The charges that we have, we filed in the month of November of 2023, uh, totaling sixteen, we had a charge of harassment, three charges of possession of drugs, two charges of drug paraphernalia, two false reports to law enforcement, one disorderly conduct, one underage drinking, one retail theft, three charges of receiving stolen property and two charges of theft by deception. Excuse me. Other police activities for November. Police Department conducted a hundred and eighty one traffic enforcement details, issued thirty five traffic citations, fifty five traffic warnings, fourteen school checks, hundred and twenty park checks, and officers conducted or participated in a hundred and twenty hours of training. So for the year to date, the police department responded or handled eight thousand, one hundred and seven calls for service, handled two hundred and fifty eight traffic accidents, four hundred and ten offenses, I'm sorry, four hundred and twelve offenses were reported, three hundred and sixty three criminal charges were filed, and, um, two thousand, three hundred and ninety hours of training were either attended or, um, participated in by the officers. And that is your police commission report for November.
Any questions for the chief?
I do. I have a question. Uh, being that it's the season.
It's the season, sir.
Do you, um, has your department ever considered doing UI checkpoints? I mean, I see it in the paper sometimes where some of the other departments do it, maybe bigger departments, I just
Um. Not an easy question to answer for you. They're, they're usually ran by county and they're usually done in the more populated areas. Um. So it would be half, something I'd have to do a little bit of research in, into. But I don't know if we'd be able to staff one either. All right.
Thank you. Chief, I have a question for you. Um, the speeds board that we had on the Ridge Road here, did, did it come back? Did you see anything unusual as far as, uh, speeds? Were they higher? Were they down?
On a facade, are we?
Yes, yeah.
Spot, Mr. Kozler. Um, there was nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay.
No, nothing that would raise a red flag.
All right. Thank you.
Normal.
Okay.
Okay, man. Other questions? Uh, how, did we have many calls with the flooding or, or you guys pretty good last couple of days?
Uh, as far as West Rock Hill goes, not many. Um, I believe the majority of them are in East Rock Hill, Lone Branch Road. Um, trees are a pretty common thing for them to come down, but, uh, to be honest with you, I don't think it was any out of the ordinary. You know, it wasn't like we were overwhelmed by calls that, that evening, so.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the report.
So moved.
So moved. Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving forward. Next on the commission reports is the Joint Rec Authority, Mr. Hal Shermer.
It's time? Uh, good evening, commission. Uh, good evening. Well, on behalf of the Joint Rec Commission, uh, we had our meeting on January, I'm sorry, December 6th. Uh, so basically, uh, we went over a couple of things. We had a outstanding issue with, uh, sewer easement going back five, six years ago. One of the neighbors across the street that was purchased by development, there were some problems with septic system. We had granted an easement. We're still negotiating about whether that easement's in there because the property initially was two single family homes or one rental or one duplex and a single, which is now being proposed for, I think, thirty, age restricted, was previously proposed for sixteen. So there's uh, I believe that there, there's some question because there was a timeline put in. So we're still talking about that with one of the neighbors about, okay, we had an easement. Are you gonna use it? Are you gonna use it for more? Uh, we had our, went through, went through our minutes, went through our financials, uh, went through the budget. Looks like we're gonna be doing a lot of fundraising, but we are gonna be reaching out, one, for the joint cells, for the Holiday House Board. What we're gonna be focusing on for this year is gonna be reaching out to the local businesses and also then partnering with the local service businesses. So for, uh, Drager, Grandview and the other ones, we are gonna be looking for donations and actually fundraising and for the first time in a while, trying to, you know, trying to integrate and trying to get in contact with the business community, but also for the service businesses, uh, reaching out to the ones which are either located in West Rock Hill or cells or in the municipalities for West Rock Hill or Sellersville. And I'm gonna see about, we are trying to, we're, um, looking to extend the discount that you have as a resident. Not just if you're a resident in the township, but if you're part of one of the resident businesses. And then also working on a couple of, bit of outreach to some of the other larger employers in the area so that if you have somebody who has HR and you've got five, ten, fifteen, twenty employees, maybe we can work something out in order to get a volume discount in order to get some more people in. We actually did pretty well this year with, uh, full year memberships because we had and May and June were just back and forth between drought, smoke, rain, thunder. So we lost a lot of days. So our income from day passes dropped quite a bit, but we're looking forward that with a little bit more uh, advertising, we now have our new rates up. We passed our new rates. They are up on the board for Holiday House on Facebook. They're up on the board for West Rock Hill and for Sellersville. So that everybody can read them. And, uh, I'm in the process of printing up the flyers so that we can put them out with some of the local businesses, put them out for the local municipalities so that you have a QR code. And it's like, oh, because we, what we found from a lot of outreach at the, at the election in November was that a lot of people don't know that there's a pool up there. And they're like, oh, you're still operating? Like, yes, we've been operating for, you know, we were off for one year and then we're off for another year. But it's like, oh, I thought that was gone. Like, I was like, no, we still are running a pool. So a lot of this is gonna be advertising. So we're focusing on the problem which has been, we need more advertising. We need more people to know about the pool and come to it because we have uh, location and services that people don't know about. Uh, just that little note from Google after updating things that the, uh, little, the, uh, sorry, the playground and hot lot after updating them in Google. It's like, oh, you now have thirty thousand uh, hits and reviews on Google from people looking on Google Maps. Yes, we have a playground. It's open all year because we don't close the playground. The pool is closed in winter time, but the playground is still there. Hot lot is still there and we still have people using it all the time. So part of this is outreach and advertising. So the hope is that we seem like we've, it looks like we have enough people. We just have to reach out and get more of them to come to the service. Uh, see, budget was through and we had a couple, we had a couple of things with working with the neighbors. A couple of them are interested in some of the history. So also I did reach out with, to Tim Huffnagle, who is one of the heads for the Sellersville Historical Society, who actually wrote a PhD paper about Holiday House Pool. So we're gonna see about trying to get some, uh, event coming up. February 14th is the pool's, I think, forty ninth anniversary or fifty first. We missed the fiftieth. We were closed. So we're gonna try to get some more information for that and also work with Brenda from, uh, West Rock Hill Historical for the anniversary or at least anniversary plus one because we were closed. And that's about it.
Okay. Uh, David, do you have some questions?
In, um, I do. Thank you. In November, I talked about, um, I asked a question about the feasibility study and I know there were some personnel issues and it didn't happen. Then I look back and I have, uh, from the October meeting, um, there was a final report and I assume you wrote it. And it talks about the summary of the pool and it talks about operational issues. It talks about the pool itself. Badly in need of patching and painting. It talks about the pump. It talks about the pool deck, the skimmers, the sliding board, the zip line, the ladders, the water fountain, the umbrellas, front office, locker. It just goes on and on. Before we commit any more money to the pool, I really think we have to know what we've got, whether it's the physical pool itself, the facilities, or the, the desire and the need of the community to have the pool and to use it. So I'm proposing that we a- address it by somehow figuring out, can we get a feasibility study done? Can we fund it or fund it jointly with Sellersville? But do it with an unbiased independent person or persons who haven't done it in nineteen sixty four or ten years ago, someone just completely new to the, the facility and the, and the, and the, uh, operation.
I, I share the same concerns because we have looked at, you know, all the things that have gone on through the years and the amount of monies that we have had to keep putting to it to make it afloat. And we talked about this for at least, at least the last three years of having a feasibility study, but I know for, I think longer. Um. I think West Rock Hill, we have to do it west, from West Rock Hill. Uh, hopefully we can do it from joint. But I, from my opinion, whether we get help or support from Sellersville, we, we have to move forward and do it ourselves so that we know whether it is viable.
I totally agree with that. We cannot, we cannot commit more money to this until we know exactly what we have. And that's gonna be, I don't think, that'll be a, a very easy go or no-go decision.
How do we go about that, Greg?
Um, I've spoke, uh, I've heard you guys talking about for a while and I spoke to George Donovan, uh, Donovan Associates. Um, Joe Phillips, I actually spoke to Joe Phillips, at Donovan Associates. And, um, got me in contact with someone from Colorado who does market studies.
Okay.
Um, what they'll do is take a look at the area. We'll take a look at the population. Um, what they'll do is take a look at the area. We'll take a look at the population. We'll take a look at all the surrounding pools. We'll look at how many building permits were issued for in-house. We'll look at areas to see how many pools are in the area. And they'll do a demographic study to see how many people they think will support a pool in its current condition, in and in a different condition in the future. And to see how many people it would draw based on those demographics and those other facilities. So you could get a real market study to see how many people are going to use the pool.
I think that's something that we should consider myself.
Oh, absolutely. I I think it should go beyond that, but I think we should start with that. I think after we, this, you're calling us a market feasibility study. I think after that, we really, depending on what the results are, we have to look at the pool itself, the physical structure. If it's fifty-one years old, where do we go from here? Are we putting Band-Aids on it every year? Are we going to blow it up and start all over again? What what are we going to do?
Yeah, and there there's a small part of that when I spoke to them. Of course, they're going to look at that. They're not going to look in depth like uh, Donovan's Donovan Associates would, that would look into the technical aspects of the pool and the filter system and the decking. They're looking more as a business model, how this pool will operate.
And from our perspective, we've always been concerned about how many people use it.
Yep.
You know, is it worth investing, you know, how much money, X number of dollars for? I I don't know the exact number this year, but last year was thirty, thirty season ticket holders or thirty-two season ticket holders from West Rock Hill?
I think thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. So, you know, when you look at the thousands of dollars that we put into the pool, you have to actually, you have to weigh that out, say, hey, is this, is this really?
Um, I don't know. That's where we put the marketing hat on going. We need to bring more people from West Rock Hill in because we're paying.
Understand.
Already paying for it, then I would, uh, just for Mr. Collingwood, the study was actually done, that was Don Krauthamel from Selzallboro Councilman. And don't tell anybody, but that was also a part of our looking towards sponsorship of, okay, these are the things, because it's, you know, after doing fundraising for my mom with the lawn feet, with Women's Club, with September Fest, with Grandview Hospital Auxiliary, with other groups, what you want to do is peg something where, okay, we have a need for this rather than can you give us money? It's like, we, you know, we need this, we need something, here's something physical that we're looking for sponsors for, and oftentimes there are people uh, some sitting in the audience who have come through and give us, give you a lot of help because they know how to do something, so you reach out to them. So that's a list of all the things of what we want. It's not the list of what we need to open up next year. It's a list of what we want and where we can look for people who have synergy that they'd work in the field and we can go with them. But it, yeah, we need to get some more ideas on how to work this. We did go through this last year with looking at the ideas of adding pickleball, adding other amenities because we actually are West, it is actually the Holiday House Pool and Recreation Center. The initial charter talks about recreation plus history. We still have, we had the YMCA, we still had the uh, zoning certificate for uh, daycare down there. We still have the field to work with baseball. So there are a bunch of other ways of looking to try to coordinate and using a facility that's closed because it's not a pool, but the facility, the facility is still there.
Right. We got, we have, we have to start though by knowing whether the pool is um, a viable asset. Whether whether it's going to make it or not.
Yep, and also then usable. And also, and along with that is if the pools, you know, how do we add things to the pool? Do we have a ghost kitchen for one of the food trucks? Do we have somebody else who comes in? Do we have event space? Do we, you know, how do we make the most out of the property that's right there? Now, there are a lot of places around here that, okay, I got a big old barn. What am I going to do with it? Okay, it becomes an event space. It becomes the winery or it becomes uh, the location. So any ideas for bringing more people in for the pool plus other events is a great help.
Okay, so.
How do we make this happen?
That, that's, that was, that's going to be my next statement or question. How do we make this happen?
Do you know any idea how much it's going to cost?
Approximately fourteen thousand.
Which is what we put in the pool every year, whether we know whether it's going to work or not.
Yep. And and with the things that we already know about, you know, like the decking and stuff that might need to be replaced in a couple of years, whatever. Um, it's a real concern.
I would, I would like to make that motion that we move forward with that.
Uh, with the feasibility studies. Market studies.
Market, market feasibility study.
Is that what that's called?
Yes.
Okay. Are we putting a dollar amount on that? You you have an actual quote of?
Fourteen thousand.
Okay. You're making the motion?
Yes.
I will second the motion.
I abstained because I'm.
Yep. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I have it. Okay, get it done.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome, Hal. Thank you for the report. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the joint rec authority.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, and I'll second it. So all those signify by saying aye, aye. Okay. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the tax collector's report. Dan Clark, how are you tonight?
Okay. For the month of December, I've collected an annual taxes, two thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and eighty-one cents. And twenty twenty-three interim, seventy-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, and streetlight tax, thirty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that after December the fifteenth, I no longer can accept personal checks for tax, real estate tax payments for current tax bills. Um, all chat, all tax payments should be received in my office by the thirty-first of December. Uh, liens will be filed January first of twenty twenty-four, and as far as next week is concerned, since Christmas falls on Monday and I usually have hours on Tuesday, and the township building is closed on Tuesday, so I am changing my hours from Tuesday to Wednesday next week, the twenty-seventh. Um, I will have them from twen-, uh, from ten o'clock to one o'clock on the twenty-seventh. So that is posted on my uh, telephone. It will be on the front door and um, and that's about it.
Okay, any questions for Suzanne?
None, thank you. Okay.
Well, one suggestion, I'm going to put that up on the, your changed hours, I'm going to put that up on the board in the park. That people see it.
Hmm, I don't think that's.
That might be easier, but also I want to thank you for putting out the uh, information about the county tax and the EMS, EMS rebates.
Yeah, yeah, I hope you guys might think about that. Um, I do plan to have an article ready for the newsletter in the springtime, spelling that out to everyone. That that is available on the county level, not on the township level, but on the county level so far.
And the paperwork is sitting in the office on the way to Suzanne's office.
Yeah, it's there.
Fire going to Suzanne's office.
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of Suzanne's report. Okay, I'll second it. All those signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the engineer's report. Mr. Steve Balla.
Uh, I have no items on the agenda tonight unless there's any questions.
I have none at this time. Anybody else? Okay, we will move forward then. Next on the agenda is the solicitor's report. Mary Everly, how are you?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There's only one item on the solicitor's report tonight. At the last meeting, you reviewed the um, lot line change plan of Mr. Romeo and his neighbor. We have drafted a resolution for approval of conditional approval of that lot line change. It has been reviewed by the applicant and they have indicated that the conditions are acceptable. So if the board so desires, they can approve the resolution by making a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to?
Make that.
Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Collingwood?
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye, aye. I have it. Thank you. Hey, with that being said, I will entertain a motion for approval of the solicitor's report.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Moving forward, uh, next on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Lippincott, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, it's been properly advertised and available on the public and on the website. Uh, some of the highlights, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be allocated for road repair. Um, that's up over, almost over fifty thousand from last year. Holiday House Pool Budget is still at thirteen thousand. Um, we're proposing a new backhoe budgeted for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the Penrith Senior Center will get their annual contribution of twenty-five hundred dollars. Other than that, it's pretty much the same as it always is. All that we need is a motion to adopt the budget.
Okay.
Any, any concern?
Tax increase.
No tax increase, no. And and five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for roads is huge. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this, or we approve the twenty twenty-four budget presented.
Yeah, uh, good for the senior center. I won't hear anything from Evie or Dave Nyman.
Okay, so you're seconding?
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye, aye. Great.
The next item is uh, the board to consider uh, authorizing the solicitor to do the EMS tax rebate that Suzanne was talking about earlier and brought up at a earlier meeting. Uh, we met with the fire panel. It was discussed. Um, this is something that could help get volunteers. And if the board so wishes, could authorize the solicitor to draft an ordinance for your consideration.
I think it's a great idea. Got to try and generate more volunteers and reward them in some way, so I.
I agree, especially for the good of the public. We we did meet with the fire departments, um, this week or last week?
Last week.
I think.
Last week. Uh, and yeah, there's a real need out there and I think anything that starts the, that process is is well worth it. So I think if we should authorize Mary to draft that ordinance.
Okay, you making that a motion?
Make that a motion.
Okay. Second, you're seconding? Motion's been made and seconded. All those signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
I have it. Thank you.
Did want to mention that that's one of the uh, it's like super jeopardy, jeopardy questions is, you know, which firehouse actually serves your house? And there's like, what? Yeah, there is actually a service map that shows you which fire company is the closest to you and almost nobody knows where their fire protection initially comes from. But we really should be thanking everybody from the fire companies because they're out there doing the job and almost nobody knows what sections they are responsible for. But just thank you to them.
I will say too, you know, there's a, there's a lot of um, classroom learning in the fire departments to learn the maps of where they actually serve or who goes to what area of the township. So I do, I do appreciate all the effort and the time that's put in from the fire departments on the uh, on the volunteer level. And as we all know, anytime that fire companies do um, dinners or fundraisers, we should try to support them the best we can because they are volunteers and and money is, everything has gone up in costs tremendously. Fire trucks are twice what they used to be. Gear, any kind of, anything that has to do with supplies is just going through the roof. So we're going to try what we can do to promote the fire departments and help them along the way. And this is a start. Okay.
All right, the next item is the, uh, I'm seeking the board's uh, permission to advertise for the TBA special study sewer area. Um, this was brought up at the planning commission. There's a map of where it's going to go on the wall. Um, all you're doing is advertising this uh, to make thirty days for public comment. Um, it'll be available here for review at the township and it'll also be put on the website. So you're not approving this, you're just putting it open for public comment for thirty days.
Just for, just for um, the public's, I don't know if anybody can see the roads, the major road down there that.
It's County Line Road. It goes, it goes down the middle and then it goes to the Hidden Valley uh, development.
Okay. So most people know where Hidden Valley is, County Line.
So Circle Drive up to the Christmas Street.
Yep. Yep. That's right. Okay.
Well, this is just to advertise.
To advertise for thirty days that people can give public comment. Do they like it? Do they hate it? Are they indifferent to it? They have thirty days to give public comment.
Okay, how do you feel about it?
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Okay. I'll make a motion then that we authorize Greg to uh, or I should say, Mary, Mary, advertise.
I'll advertise.
You'll advertise, okay.
It's already pre-written.
All right, motion's been made?
Second.
Second it. All those signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you. Any old business? Anybody have any old business?
Done.
Okay.
Nope, I have none.
Have none. Any new business?
Not tonight.
Nope, not tonight. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Please raise your hand, state your name. Yes, sir. Mr. Miller.
Good evening. Jim Miller, Thousandacre Road. In twenty twenty, the board approved a purchase of an audio video system so residents could watch the board supervisors' meeting and the planning commission meetings as well as watch them later on YouTube. They could watch them live and on YouTube. The system also allowed participants to raise their hand and ask questions when appropriate and also speak during the guest comments section at the end of the meeting. Additionally, viewers could see supervisors as as well as a projection screen at one time. The system was also installed for more transparency and cost a total of one hundred dollars. This year, the board approved and installed a new audio system. Home residents can no longer view the the meetings live. They can't participate in any guest comments and they can't see any of the information on this board. Not seeing the the monitor becomes an issue in meetings such as the planning commission where the township engineer and guest speakers are using it to explain their plans. Makes it very difficult to to understand what's going on in a planning commission meeting if the people at home are watching it or even watching it on YouTube later and they can't see the board. This upgrade took away much of the functionality we've come to rely on and cost more than thirty thousand dollars. Speaking for the people who prefer to see the meetings live from home, I would like to see this functionality restored. Exactly what did we get for our thirty thousand? Is there any way we can get this functionality back? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will take them under advisement. Okay, anybody else have any public comment? Mr. White.
Good evening, uh, Don White. So this one, I don't know, you talk a lot about the fire companies tonight, so what I have to say kind of fits in. Um, I've lived in this community for sixty-seven years. I I think I got seniority on everybody. Um, I'm kind of embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for this community. Um, our contributions to the fire companies is sad, very sad. It has not increased in years and it is very low. We give one point three million to the uh, police department. We give a hundred and two thousand dollars to four fire companies to cover our township. It's absolutely ridiculous. You know, we're kind of the community mooches. We're mooching off of these communities. They're all contributing large amounts of money and we're not doing anything. Sellersville gives three mils to their fire department. We give, I guess, I don't know how they divide it, how you divide it up, but I guess we give twenty-five thousand to them. They get one fourth of it, I guess. I don't know. It's point seven five mils that we contribute. Um, it, East Rock Hill gives one mil. They give more than us. Sellersville has more populate, less population than us and they give considerably more. I don't, I seriously doubt we're getting the coverage we would like to have from these fire companies when they know that, you know, we're not giving anything. We're not giving a fair amount. You guys brag about no tax increase. I am confident that the people of this community would support a tax increase to help the fire companies. These people need the money. They're volunteers and there's study after study that shows that um, they're going to go away and they won't be volunteer fire companies anymore if we don't support them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. White. Any other public comment? Being none? Oh, yes, ma'am, in the back. Please.
Hi, I'm Jackie Willard, uh, twenty and a hundred Klimmer Avenue.
Hi, Jackie.
Um, last meeting, um, someone asked the police chief about homelessness in the, in the township. Apparently, we had someone living on Veris's property. Um, and I was curious, I I think they got kicked out. But I'm curious what the uh, solution is for uh, situations like this. I don't know where this person went. I just know there was somebody that we didn't recognize going back and forth for a while. And there was an odd vehicle living on the property. So.
You know anything? Yeah, um, there was somebody living on the property and then when they left, Veris put up, um.
They put up a Jersey barrier.
Jersey barrier.
Yeah.
They put up Jersey barriers so nobody can get back. And they're no longer back.
Okay.
That's what I knew.
Okay, do we have a solution for one thing? We don't? Okay.
We don't, nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for a German into executive session. Okay, motion's been made?
Second.
Second? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
And happy.
Thank you for coming.